Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Good something.
Actually, it's afternoon, isn't it? It's not six o'clock yet, so good afternoon. The Tuesday, May 23 meeting of the Leon County School Board is called to order. We are meeting at 3955 West Pensacola Street, Tallahassee, Florida. Our first opening item calls for the pledge of allegiance. And if we all would stand and just repeat the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have no one scheduled today to do our thought for today. So again, we will just welcome you here as we take care of the business of the district. Chair Striplin, co-chair, would you read the changes and additions, please?
I most certainly will. Madam Chair, changes and additions to the, what's today?
Twenty-third.
May 23 Leon County School Board meeting are as follows. Superintendent recommends approval of changes and additions. Number one, item 6.03, approval of personnel actions, May 23, 2017. Replace documentation and change the information in the public content area. Number two, add item 23.01, new issues from board members. FSBA requests veto of FEFP, Roseanne Wood. Number three, add item 18.15, items of consideration. Tallahassee-Leon County Planning Commission representative for 2017 through 2020. Number four, add item 10.03, project amendment request for Title III Part A immigrant grant. This item is being added due to the fact that this amendment is to conduct a budgetary function change to the existing allocation. Upon fiscal review with LCS Financial Services, we discovered that the capitalized equipment does not meet the threshold to be considered capitalized. As a result, we needed to change this line item to non-capitalized equipment with a new function and object code. By the way, back up, number three, item 18.15 has been pulled.
Okay.
Number five, item 17.03, 2017-18 Pace Center for Girls, Leon Juvenile Detention Center and the AMI Kids Tallahassee Calendar Dates, DJJ school sites. The subject and public content has been changed to reflect the new title of the item. Also, the Pace Calendar Documentation has been added. The addition of Pace Center for Girls Leon Calendar is being added due to the oversight of the file not being uploaded when the AMI Kids Tallahassee and Juvenile Detention Center, JDC's calendars were uploaded. There are currently three DJJ sites that LCS services and Pace Center for Girls of Leon is included in the three. Number six, item 18.14, tentative agreement of the 17-18 Collective Bargaining Contract between the Local 10-10, District Council 78, and International Union of Painters and Allied Trades, Local 10-10, and the Leon County School Board. Replace documentation. Number seven, item 18.13, tentative agreement of the 17-18 Collective Bargaining Contract between the Leon Educational Staff Professional Association, the Florida Education Association, LESPA, and the Leon County School Board. Replace documentation. Number eight, item 5.01, District Advisory Council. DAC will not be on the reports to be heard and will not be represented at this board meeting. And we will miss Cheryl Collier-Brown greatly.
You have heard the changes and additions read into the record. What is the pleasure of the board, please?
Move approval, second.
Moved by Woods, second by Rasmussen. Questions? None? All in favor say aye.
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 So I have a, I have a problem. And I should've said something earlier. I tried to pass a note.
I'm sorry.
No, it's my fault. I don't know if there's a way to back this up. But item 18.15 was...
Pulled.
We did pull it?
Yes. We pulled it. We got your note.
Have no problem.
We read it. That's no problem. You're on it, sir.
Thank you. No, y'all are on it.
Good for you.
All right.
All right. So now we're ready for the superintendent spotlight. I think the history fair winners is part of what you're going to talk about tonight. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, ma'am. We had some students that we wanted to recognize. Today's kind of awkward or odd because we're having an afternoon meeting on a school day. Stacy Thompson, the history fair district coordinator, was going to be here. But it looks like she is not in attendance. So Ms. Gregory, would you like to come forward and talk very briefly about the history fair?
Good afternoon, Superintendent, School Board members. It is my pleasure to be here this afternoon to present to you some outstanding students. We have in our collection of those we serve, a group of young men and women who have done an amazing job with an academic fair. Academic fair is an important part of the curriculum that we teach in Leon County schools. They provide our students an opportunity to not only research, but synthesize and present information in a way that is meaningful to the students. And so we have several students who have received recognition. And we just want to take a moment this afternoon and to, in a public forum, acknowledge their good work.
There you go.
Okay.
And I was at the, our local history fair competition we had over at Lively in Building 14. Y'all would've been very proud of our students and how they've represented our school, Leon County schools.
We have earning first place in senior group exhibit, Creed King Kate Powell from Leon High School. Teacher is Ms. Janine, Ms. Janine. In first place, junior individual website, Akash Bat from Fairview. First place, senior individual website, Joey Jung Lincoln. Second place, senior individual performance, Kiara Thompson. Second, junior group exhibit Jenny Chi Deer Lake. Third, senior group documentary, Emma Hanley Quinn Holden Truck from Records. Third, senior group performance, Grace Hollum and Abigail Stalp Childs. These students have been advanced to the state contest and have been nominated for awards there. And that would be Katie Mann and her teacher. She is from Childs and her teacher is Ms. Watson.
Okay. Thank you. And we appreciate the wonderful work that those students have engaged in. And thank you for bringing their certificates and notifying us of that wonderful service that they provide.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. We've taken care of the changes and additions. So that means we ought to be about number 1802. Unless, Mr. Superintendent, we need to go to...
Got a report to be heard.
A report to be heard. 503, there it is, right there. Title I Advisory Council, Marie Claire Liman. One of our regulars who works hard for us. Good to see you.
Hi, good afternoon. I have one of our TAC members here with me today. We had intentions of having a larger delegation, but because of the timing of the meeting as well as your rushed schedule, we're keeping it brief. But Mr. Mazur is here with me. We had our meeting at Rudiger Elementary. Principal Stevens gave us a very good overview of what they're doing there, and it's very impressive. I wanted to tell you, as this was our last meeting of the year, just wanted to reiterate how very engaged, committed, consistently present and thoughtful the Title I Advisory Council members and contributors have been all year. And I'm really encouraged by the work of that group. And we wanted to give you a quick summary of some of the important discussions we've had there. The first item is the importance of strengthening our parent entities and our ability to reach out and involve more and more parents in our Title I communities.
Good evening. Good afternoon. A couple of the things that we were tasked with was teacher recruitment and retention. First thing, we had five main areas, additional monies, site leadership, teacher support structures, flexibility, and Title I recruitment fairs. A couple of things was the salary, kind of a job analysis of a Title I teacher, how it differs a little bit from maybe a non-Title I teacher. And so that, that would kind of tie into something a little bit more than the supplement of the $100, which is currently per semester right now. Supportive resources. So in terms of leadership, supportive, developing and recognizing were the main things that people were looking for. And then a couple of things underneath the student, or the teacher support structures were dealing with behavior, mental health, counseling, alternative approaches to just regular behavior plans, maybe some meditation and other things that were in there as well. And then parent university was also kind of talked about and building community ties so that everyone was working together. So we'll give you the rest of this, but thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, thank you.
And just some stray issues as well that we've been talking about all year is how whereas we've really empowered the principals to make Title I spending decisions, which in light of what's being decided at the state level was very prescient of the district to do that. But local control without sort of the structures of not working in silos, I think we want to make sure that we really give principals the opportunities to either pool resources or share best practices and really in recognition of the overlap in their communities that they serve so that none of the schools feel like they're working in isolation from one another. And then one last point, because time is short and I realize that, is that we want, we want to redouble our efforts as a community to highlight what is good that is happening in our Title I schools and really be kind of cheerleaders for our Title I schools and try not to let the school grade be a reducing factor, being reduced to the school grade, but really celebrate the hard work that teachers, principals, and all stakeholders are doing in those schools. So thanks again for your support this year. We're excited to be back strong next year. Do you have any questions? I know you were rushed, but...
Well, we're not that rushed. We want to thank you for your hard work. And hopefully you will eat your wheaties over the summer and come back and work again, you and the committee.
Yes, I'm gonna have to.
Appreciate it. Oh, Ms. Lewis has a question?
Yes, and I do like, thank you for taking this ball and running with it this year. I attended your programs and you've been great. I want to commend you on your component of a parent. That's a good initiative.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for that.
Thank you all, thank you.
Thank you, thank both of you. All right. That was 503, items of consent. I think we heard those changes and additions. Where are you all on that?
Consent agenda.
Yes.
Move approval of the consent agenda?
Second.
Moved by Woods, no. Moved by Rasmussen, second by Louis Butler. Questions? None? All in favor state aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Okay.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Superintendent.
As part of the item of consent were some personnel issues and appointments. And I am very, I'm very excited about this. This completes my, or our, reorganization for next, for next school year. We're doing it way ahead of schedule. Usually this is done at the very end of June, before the Fourth of July. So people aren't moved into place until after the holidays, which is the middle of July. So I wanted to go ahead and bring it to you now. These, these changes as far as the administration on Pensacola Street and some, some of our school changes. That way, these folks can go ahead, once they wrap up things next week, get in those, their new schools and start making adjustments in the transitions during the month of June instead of waiting until the middle of July. So having said that, I am very, very, very proud to announce that Dr. Alan Cox is going to be named an Assistant Superintendent of School Management. Dr. Cox, as you well know, has been with our school system and, like me, next year be 30 years. Dr. Cox, if you'd like to stand, congratulations. And then finally completing, completing my leadership team is Dr. Kathleen Rogers. And Dr. Rogers is, again, is just a wonderful resource and does amazing job working in intervention services and school equity. So Dr. Rogers will become the Assistant Superintendent for Intervention Services. So Dr. Rogers, if you please stand to be recognized. And then I'm also named, naming a Director of Elementary Schools. And Sue and I have worked together. She's, Sue's amazing. I'm very excited for her to be a member of my immediate team. And you know, Sue has done a number of things. She was at Adult and Community Ed. She was with me at Leon. She's been at Moore for the last 11 years. And so I'm proud to welcome Sue Crawl as the Director of Elementary Schools. So Sue. And Ms. Shelley Bell. This, I'm very excited about this one too. I'm excited about all of them, but I'm very excited about this one. So Shelley, as you all know, Ms. Bell is very passionate about career technical programs in, in our schools. And we've talked a lot about Lively and what Lively is gonna look like in the future and, and the direction we were heading. We talked about how we've, you know, I realized it was being underutilized and it was just a, a, a great resource for our community that we need to tap into further and to offer these programs. And this is Shelley's, this is Ms. Bell's passion. So I'm very excited to name Shelley Bell the Director of Career Technical and Adult Education. So Ms. Bell, you would stand. And then finally, at the district level, and Giselle is busy with an itty-bitty baby, but Giselle Marsh, who has been at Raw Middle School, is going to be moving out. She, her and Jillian have been talking over the last several months before she had her child. And Giselle is going to be named the Director of School Improvement and Accountability. Giselle is a, an amazing woman. And she can do a multiple, multitude of things. And that's, and that's a big job. So we're excited to welcome Giselle. If you're watching, congratulations. You and my mom are probably the only two that are watching, but... So that opened up some, some individual, individual school sites. And we'll start with high school. I'm, I'm proud to announce a good friend of mine and, and another person that's been in our schools district at many different levels, but never been a principal at the high school level. I'm proud to announce Mr. Desmond Cole will take over as Principal of Amos P. Godby High School. So Mr. Cole, congratulations. Which then has a domino effect and leaves a void at Nem's Middle School. So I am proud to announce today that Dr. Kelvin Norton will take over as Principal of Nem's Middle School. So Dr. Norton, if you'd please stand. Giselle coming out to the district office opened up a middle school job at my alma mater, Augusta Raw Middle School. So I'm proud to announce that Dr. Christopher Small in his progression, in his career, has accepted a secondary position at Augusta Raw Middle School. So Dr. Small, congratulations. And then with, with Sue coming out here, with Sue Crawl coming out to the district office, it opened up a position at WT Moore. And I asked Sue, because you know, she's been there 11 years. It's like, you know, you want to have some say-so. You built wonderful things going on at Moore and should have some say. And the first words out of her mouth were, Carrie Anderson, Carrie Anderson, Carrie Anderson. And Carrie has a lot of experience in that community. She, Carrie's a product of our public schools. And I'm very proud to announce that Carrie Lamar Anderson will now be named as Principal of WT Moore Elementary School. So Ms. Anderson, congratulations. And then with the change at Raw Middle School and Dr. Small's going to Raw, I went to Doc, I asked Dr. Small. I said, okay, Chris, you know, let's talk about Springwood and your community and your faculty and, and a good fit there. And he said, without a doubt, Tina Austin would do a wonderful job here. She's well respected by this community, well respected by, by the faculty. And it, and she's earned, she's earned this and it's her turn. So I'm proud to announce Ms. Tina Austin will take over at Springwood Elementary School. And then finally, last but certainly, certainly not least, I had an opportunity to meet Zelena O'Banner shortly after my election. And, and she was going out on maternity leave and congratulations. And looking at her future and thinking about her and where she could best fit this community. And as you well know, Dr. Gwynlin Thomas is, is retiring next year. She's finishing drop. And I talked to Gwen and, you know, Gwen went to Griffin. She's been in Griffin Heights for a long, long time and has a good idea and hand on the pulse of that, that community. And, and she said, you know, Rocky, I think Zelena O'Banner would be a wonderful fit as my replacement here in Griffin. So we're gonna name Ms. O'Banner as Principal in Transition at Griffin Middle School. All these moves, like I said, will become effective July the first with, with new contracts running from July 1st to next June. But doing it now gives them the opportunity. Once we close school out next week, I believe teachers are finished on June the first, they will start transitioning with, with each other to develop plans and strategies moving forward as opposed to waiting half the summer before, before doing this. I'm, I'm, I'm very excited. I know there was a lot of anxiety about who's going where and who's doing this. But I know you use this word a lot, transparency. I'm gonna be as transparent as I possibly can. I mean, I want all of us to be involved in these decisions. And I've gotten lots of input and feedback from my Assistant Superintendents and others about these decisions. This is one, something that was just thought up overnight. So there is no doubt in my mind that these are solid choices. So again, to all of you, thank you, congratulations. And now it's, it's time to go to work. So there you go.
Thank you, Mrs. Superintendent. And congratulations to each one of you. Ms. Woods, would you like...
I just wanted to make one comment.
Yes.
I think another thing that's so good, Superintendent, about doing this now is school still in session so the folks who are leaving their schools can say goodbye to the people who are there. And that's really important. And so thank you so much for doing this before school's out, for that, for that closure.
Yes, other comments? Okay. Well, thank you, Mrs. Superintendent, for sharing this with us. And congratulations to each of you in your new roles. We look forward and have high expectations for each of you. I remember back in November, when the new superintendent was coming aboard, I said, you're going to be doing this. And we know that you would look at even more than certifications. You're gonna look for the right fit for each one of the communities that these individuals will be leading. And so I trust and know that you've looked at that because these are special people and special sites in the community that will be under their care and authority. So we look forward to next year. Thank you very much. Okay. So where am I now?
1801.
1801, finally. Let me turn the page or... I'm not as together as I would be, but I'm certain it's gonna start with a recommendation from the superintendent. And it does, and it will, because it states, as I know it should, that...
You're giving yourself some time here?
I'm giving myself a little break here. And there's somebody at the podium. And the somebody is Dr. Pridgen. So Dr. Pridgen, you're going to talk to us about what?
That would be, thank you. And Ms. Bowman, before we go ahead, I thought you might take the privilege to know that there were four generations of Godby principals here today.
And so we need to have them stand, don't we?
Well, you got Jillian Gregory, Ms. Bell, and we have Desmond and myself.
Would you please stand? Generations, tradition. Yes. That is noteworthy. Yes, and of course, Godby is down the Thorpe Street corridor. Thank you, Mr. Pridgen, Dr. Pridgen. Okay. So you're gonna talk to us about the approval to advertise amendments to policy 6340?
Yes, ma'am. Real quickly, you have a, a full summary there in the item summary in your documentation. Basically, this is the one we've been talking about several weeks of how our way of work really didn't match with the policy. But basically, the terminology. So we changed the title of it to really talk about what we do and address that with, if you'll look at the new title, modifications, alterations, we'll be going to remodeling and renovations to school buildings. And that's really what we do. And anything that doesn't fall under that goes, is a board action. Okay?
Yeah, I think they want to be excused, Dr. Pridgen. It looks to me like they must have some new assignments for tomorrow.
Dr. Cox already has that, so...
All right, good, thank you. Go ahead.
And also, the, the threshold on the amount goes now that you will look in your capital outlay, which we'll talk about later. And those are all specified in there. And anything that's not in there will be a board action going forward. So that's the changes to that policy.
Okay. Questions, anyone? All right. Is there a recommendation?
And it was fully vetted by Opal.
That's a strong recommendation.
Many conversations and Jeff.
Good, good, good.
Move approval.
Moved by Woods, second by Louis Butler. Questions? None? All in favor state aye.
Aye.
Opposed is the same. It passes unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Pridgen. Oh, you're not up there anymore? Two, the superintendent, 18.02. The superintendent recommends approval to advertise amendments to policy 5335, care of students with chronic health conditions for a public hearing and adoption on July 20, 2017. Is there a motion?
Move approval, 18.02.
Moved by Louis Butler.
Second.
Second by Didi Rasmussen. Questions? All in favor state aye.
Aye.
Opposed is the same. It passes. 18.3, the superintendent recommends approval to advertise amendments to policy 5330. Thirty. It's thirty. Use of medications for public hearing. Is that Mariana coming out? Use of medications for public hearing and adoptions on, adoption on July 20, 2017.
Move approval.
Moved by Striplin, second by Louis Butler. Questions, comments from anyone? Hearing, none? All in favor state aye.
Aye.
Opposed is the same. It passes unanimously. 18.4 is a public hearing for adoption. The superintendent recommends, following a public hearing, approval of amendments to policy 8452, use of automated external defibrillators, AED, effective May 24, 2017.
No speakers.
No speakers. So with no speakers, what's the pleasure?
Move approval.
Moved by DDR, second by Louis Bu, Didi Rasmussen. Second by Louis Butler. Questions, comments? All in favor state aye.
Aye.
Opposed is the same. It passes unanimously. 1805 is a public hearing for adoption as well. The superintendent recommends, following a public hearing, approval to, of amendments to policy package 5136, use of personal communication devices. And 5610.4, suspension of bus riding transportation privileges effective May 24, 2017. Were there questions on this one?
No, ma'am, and no speakers.
No speakers.
Did you have something on this one?
I did have a question. What did I say? I did, I need to find it. Uh, thank you. She's looking for it for me. Yeah. I, I think I was asking about, refresh my memory in conjunction with transportation in Dr. Rogers' office as a guide for schools. No, that's not it. 18.05. That's '07. That's '08. We're looking for '05. It's back over here. I think my question was, basically, refresh my mind on the kind of things that could happen to a student with a device on a bus that could get the student, yes, suspended from the bus privileges. I just need to be refreshed, couldn't remember. Thank you, Dr. Cox.
Yeah, so I, did you get the attachment that has the, it has all the violations on there? It has all the circumstances.
Okay.
You know, it's anywhere from foul language to bullying to weapons, and this is all in policy.
Okay.
And the, you know, the principal, the principal oversees the discipline that we administer for situations on the bus. So, and that, we've got into policy as well. And then we have a substantial list here. We've got zero tolerance stuff. That's basically like bullying, weapons, threat, hazing of some type, threatening the driver, threatening the driver's assistant. All that's off-the-bus stuff. And we got stuff for foul language, racial slurs. You know, there's a, so there is a list that, that we follow to do. Those are the kind of things.
A phone could be taken, removed from a student, and that's what I'm thinking.
So with the phone piece of it, okay, so they, they can have phones on the bus.
Right.
They cannot audiotape or videotape other students on the bus. And the, and the, the bus driver, now if the phone's causing disruption sometime, he has that discretion if it's causing a disruption on the, the bus. But that's, that's how we handle that.
Okay. I, I was just recalling that there had been many...
Dr. Rogers can add to that if she...
Okay, questions in the past about that? Okay, questions in the past about that and so?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Um, there was a transportation task force about three years ago and we all worked to develop this particular handout that you, you have in front of you. We also worked with training the bus drivers. There are typically with, before a referral or anything is written for any student that rides the bus, there are three interventions that the bus drivers use with those students. So, prior to whatever infraction that was brought to your attention, typically, the bus driver has done several things. So, for example, call the parent, move the student's placement on the bus. There are various things that they do to get the student in compliance before they actually write a referral.
Okay, all right. That helps. It does. Thank you. All right, where am I, Jeff? We're ready for the question?
Need a motion?
Need a motion?
Had it, had it.
All in favor, you heard the...
Have you had a motion? We need a motion in a second.
Move approval. Moved by Woods.
Second.
Second by Striplin. You've heard the discussion further. All in favor?
Aye.
With a motion, aye. It passes unanimously. Thank you. Eighteen oh six, public hearing adoption. The superintendent recommends, following a public hearing, approval of amendments to policy fifty-three twenty, immunization, effective May twenty-fourth, twenty seventeen.
There are no speakers.
No speakers. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Moved by Striplin, second by Louis Butler. Questions, comments, none? All in favor state aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Eighteen oh seven, the superintendent recommends approval to, of recommendation by Imagine Leon LLC to close Imagine School at evening rolls and terminate the charter.
Move approval.
Moved by DDR. I'm into the DDR. Didi Rasmussen.
Second.
Second by Woods. Question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think you and I both, it appears like, just had some, I think, we're just, I was concerned what steps we're taking to, I know this means some children are being displaced, there's been some turnover in staff. I know we're all concerned about some of our charter schools and their success and what are we doing to kind of monitor this with any others that may come along or, and Bev did, I saw the response here, we just got it, so I was just kind of briefing through it, but anything you could add to the conversation regarding charter schools? I know we hate to see something like this and with, with children being displaced or starting school in one area and then being moved.
Right. And speak to the impact, if you would, for us as Leon County Schools, I guess.
In terms of Imagine Charter School, if you remember, you voted to authorize a two-year charter term. There were some concerns that we all had and after that item was passed, the schools' board, at the recommendation of the company, decided to, to close the school. And one of the reasons they did that is they were, had some financial issues related to their facility. We, we were aware of those. The company had been patching a hole in their budget for some time and that was one of the reasons we only recommended the two-year charter. And, and statute does give them the authority to, to recommend closure of their school, which is what they did. They were at a point where they only had about one hundred and sixty-seven students. If this had happened in a very large charter school, it would have been a significant impact to us.
Okay.
It would have been a lot better for students if it had happened earlier, before the March and April deadlines, but those, many of those parents have been working with our, our choice office and we've actually placed at least half of those students in slots that were still open in schools that they chose and the rest of the students will be, and actually have been withdrawn to their home zone schools. There may be schools, students that end up in private schools and other charter schools. We don't, we don't know at this point. The parents have not withdrawn them, so the last, as of the last day of school, they will be withdrawn to their home zone schools and, and our schools will be aware, aware of that and in most instances, it won't be a large impact on our schools. And, and in terms of your questions about monitoring, we regularly monitor charter schools. We issue monitoring reports at the end of every year, following receipt of school grades and test score, test score information because we want to make academic performance one of the primary things that we monitor. And we, again, can bring those reports to you at any point in time. Those can be on the agenda for information if you would like. We're not aware of any other charter schools that are closing. We are in the process of negotiating a charter with Governor's Charter. We, we are in that process, so hopefully, we'll be successful and we will bring information to you whether we are or not because you will have to approve the charter once that is final, final negotiated.
I have a couple of follow-up questions. Thank you. So, two things. You said that there were some concerns about the schools and we were presented with that, with that school and we were presented with that information and we decided to extend the charter for two years. Looking back, is there anything we could have done differently or should have done differently?
I think the recommendation was a sound recommendation. We could have, we could have brought a recommendation to you, honestly, for both of these schools to terminate and, because neither one of them met their student performance goals. Once we do that, then, in either case, whether we decide not, not to renew a charter or whether we have issues with an app, an application, in any case, we can end up in litigation. And our hope is always, our desire is always not to end up in litigation. In terms of Imagine Charter School, that board simply determined, actually, the company simply determined that it could not afford to continue putting extra money into the school. I think it was, it was good. There were one hundred and sixty-five students there. There were parents who had chosen that school, who obviously wanted to be there and we gave them the opportunity to continue enrollment at that school, but the company had the right to decide not to continue that. Governors, there are over six hundred students at that school. We really were not comfortable bringing a recommendation to non-renew a charter when there are that many students who have chosen to, to attend that school. We, we really felt it was more important for, to give them an opportunity to improve, which, which is what our recommendation was. And hopefully, we will bring a charter to you before the end of June. That is our goal.
Okay. Are we seeing the same kind of concerns with Governor's Charter that we were with Imagine?
We, we have some concerns about students' performance and we have some other concerns about ESE services, but again, we're working to negotiate those and the company has said loud and clear, they also have a management company, Charter School USA, and the company has said loud and clear, in fact, said it to us this week, that they're working very, very hard to ensure that none of those problems exist at the end of two years. They have told us they will not. They are not moving for an automatic renewal. They're going to submit a renewal document at the beginning of the second year, so you will be making another decision in seventeen, during seventeen eighteen about whether or not the school will continue.
Further questions?
Yes.
Do we have five charter schools now?
What?
Are we overseeing five charter schools?
We, we have two arts and sciences, two arts and science schools and Tallahassee Schools, School of Math and Science and Governors. After, after Imagine closes, there will be four. We will, we very likely will receive some applications by August first, so we will be reviewing applications as well at that point.
Okay. Dida, thank you. Along with the grades and test scores, do this, do this, do the charter schools submit financial stuffs?
Yes, they do.
They do.
All of the schools submit monthly, except the School of Arts and Sciences on Thomasville Road. They only have to submit quarterly because they're considered a high-performing charter school. And our finance office receives those financials and reviews them and, and we all review them and determine if we see a problem. We haven't seen a huge problem in the past few years simply because we've got a couple of management companies that are helping to pay for the schools. They're not making a profit, they are helping to pay for the schools' operations.
So, in addition to the financials for the school, do we also see financials from the management company?
No.
We don't? So, we don't know whether the management company is in financial...
We don't know that.
I'm just curious, Bev. I remember once long ago, there was a school whose furniture, used our furniture and such stuff and, well, let me ask it another way. This school owned its own furniture and technological equipment, is that right? So, we're not caught left with...
We, we have a meeting scheduled at the, we've been in constant communication with the school. We've noticed them like we did this school you're referring to, to let them know that that anything that which is purchased with public funds is returned to the, the sponsor, which would be us. We've been in constant contact with a person who is working this issue for us, who's putting together an updated inventory. We will do a walkthrough. Manny will go with me with Dexter, I believe it's next week, to see what's there and, and to confirm what's on the inventory and make decisions about what should come back to us. They, they will be required to provide documentation of anything. If they say things weren't bought with public money, they are required to provide document, documentation to us to prove it. We assume it's purchased with public money unless they document that it's not. So, we are working on that. Additionally, we, you will receive a, an agenda item, hopefully, the first part of July. It's taken a long time to do this, but we, we also had to transfer property from Woodville Charter to the School of Arts and Sciences on Thomasville Road. And that's been an endeavor. We, a number of us have worked together on that and we will have to formally transfer that property as soon as we finalize that inventory. And we were directed by DOE to do that. Not all of the property, but the property that was bought with the charter school grant was required to be transferred back to them. But I don't think, I, I'm comfortable saying that we are working collaboratively with Imagine to ensure that any property that should be returned to us will be and any funding, if there's anything that remains after the budget closes out.
I'm just curious, were there further questions about, about, their enrollment was so, so very high at one time? Six hundred and sixty-three students. Do we know what caused the dwindling and...
Well, it's, it's really hard to, to, to really know what caused the issues with enrollment, but several things happened to that school at one time. In the middle of the year, prior to the year that it started losing students, the principal was moved by the management company to North Carolina. And the school, and the parents really liked that principal. They, the board didn't decide that, the company did. Not saying that the principal who came in wasn't, wasn't a good principal, but they liked her. So, when you move a principal in the middle of the year, that sometimes upsets parents. At the same time, our district began charter school choice recruitment and so many of those students chose to come back to us because they had a choice of where to go. At the same time, Governor's Charter School opened. So, you had three situat, three different situations that could have, might have impacted parent decisions about attending that school. The school continued to decline after that, every year.
All right, just curious.
I do, I have a question. First, we were very proactive and I believe Bev and Jamie Holloman went to the school, met with parents to talk about enrollment and choice issues, so there was a lot of work that went in on the front end to try to take care of those kids before next school year started. As far as their equipment, can another charter lay claim to their, to their property and with the facility, that's not a public facility, so another charter could not claim that as empty space, right?
No, that, 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 it, the buildings are not, they lease those buildings, so those buildings are not public property. Although, public money has been used to pay the cost of the lease, but it's, those aren't public buildings. In terms of the property, no. All of their property statutorily is returned to us. So, no, if, we could decide to transfer them to another charter school if that's what we want to do, but we make those decisions.
So, I went to visit Tallahassee Math and Science the other day and it's a nice little school. I mean, they're doing, they're doing a good job and quite honestly, when I was over, when they were over by the hospital at the old Holy Comforter site, they've, they've come a long way, but now, if they can use, if we identify capital outlay dollars that go to that site and then some other person, company owns that facility, if they shut down, is that, is it a public facility, not a public facility, public, private, I mean...
If, if it's owned by a private individual...
Even though tax dollars went to renovate and remodel and...
Right, and in most cases, Superintendent Hannah, we would not be able to use a charter school facility anyway because it does not, they don't, they don't, they're not required to meet SREF standards. They meet local code, but they don't meet SREF standards. So, if you look at the Governor's Charter building on Mahan, at the Imagine building, at the SAS or Tallahassee School of Math and Science buildings, none of them meet the standards that we're required to meet. So, it would be very difficult for us to use those facilities.
Further questions, comments? Thank you, Ms. Owens. I think we're ready for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It passes unanimously. Item eighteen point A, the superintendent recommends approval of waiver to charter timelines and approval of twenty sixteen seventeen accountability plan for Governor's Charter Academy.
Move approval.
Moved by Woods.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Questions, Striplin?
Thank you. So, forgive me, we probably just covered this, Bev, and you are a wealth of information. I know I ask you all the time about charter schools and I just, I think just because of what's going on with our state and our country, there's just a great concern that I have for charter schools and what's going to happen to our public schools because of that and what's going to happen to our students. So, the question here, so we are approving, could you give me a little information here? We're approving a waiver of accountability plan for them?
No, we're approving a waiver of the timelines. Initially, our charters, with all of our charter schools, required our accountability plans to be renegotiated if they chose to renegotiate them and, by, by October. But because of some timelines that changed with DOE and, and our ability to receive test scores, we changed that to February. This school wanted to change its plan, but did not follow the process that we had established and, and I think that the process wasn't followed because the principal changed. The principal had been following the process, same principal for the years, all the years that they were open. She resigned in August. They had a new principal that came in who did not obviously understand the process and she left while we were trying to finalize the process and a new principal came in. So, I don't think that they understood what they were supposed to do. The company should have understood it, their board, but they didn't. I don't think there's any harm in having the plan to us at this point. They've not changed an awful lot. Jillian actually reviewed their plan and I guess what I probably should have started with is our accountability plan set performance goals for our charter schools. Those are the academic measures that we use to determine whether or not they're making the progress they're supposed to make. And so, this plan is, is that plan for Governor's Charter and we need a sixteen seventeen plan in place so that we can evaluate them.
Further questions? Bev, I was just a little bit confused. I think I'm all right right now, but in item summary, the first line, the charter between Leon County School Board and Renaissance Charter School, Inc. requires Governor's Charter School to submit its annual academic accountability plan to Leon County School Board for initial approval and whatever amendments were necessary. So, we got two schools here and one depending on the other?
We actually have one governing board. The governing board for Governor's Charter Academy is named Renaissance Charter School Incorporated.
Got it.
Okay. So, they, they actually are the board for thirty, forty charter schools across the state of Florida. Their, their home is in Fort, in Fort Lauderdale and all their members live in other parts of the state.
All right.
But that's, that's their name.
Okay, so they are called Renaissance Charter, but, okay, I got it. I just thought to...
Okay.
Okay, for the, Ms. Louis Butler.
Hello, I needed to know. So, and in the pace, at the end of the year, we always got a, a academ, we got an accountability plan that you always presented from all the charter schools. Do we still get that?
We, we can. We haven't always brought those to you, but we can always bring them to you for information once we finalize them. We have to receive, receive the results from DOE before we can finalize them. I have been in every school, every charter school and have, have monitoring forms filled out on all of them at this point and I'm just waiting for the results of the assessment. So, I can, we can bring that for information or we can bring it for discussion. It's up to you all.
I remember you always did.
Yes, we have done that.
And everything, at the finance and everything was in the, I remember that, okay.
Ms. Striplin?
Thank you. Is there a chance that we can see the grades as compared to, from the charter schools as compared to our traditional public schools?
I think that Ms. Gregory's office could certainly provide that information to us and I think it's very important. We, we receive annual evaluations from the Department of Education related to charter schools and I think it would be very nice for us to see how our charter schools perform in relation to our schools. It would be very, very interesting.
I think so and as a follow-up, I know, Ms. Wood, we had both talked about the importance of us selling, selling our product. We are, we want to sell our public, public schools. I went today to the Link Up concert this morning with TSO and a ruby diamond full of fourth graders completely engaged in, in music and learning and they were so excited and I thought, what a, what a joy this is. But to, to sell our schools, if, if we had that knowledge and that statistic, if we see a vast disparity, that's something we want to know about, so I would love to see that.
And I think it would be certainly very helpful for us to do what charter schools do because we receive a lot of information there, ads on television about what, how they're performing and we probably do need to do some of the same thing, yes.
I think you...
So, would it be possible for us to get this kind of information, say by next board meeting, Mrs. Superintendent, just for... Well, soon.
Well, that would be based on last year. We may want to wait until we get this year's scores.
So we'll wait until then, but that is in the docket, coming up.
Yes.
Thank you. Wonderful. Good discussion.
Thank you, Bev.
I think we're ready to vote. Thank you, Bev. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposes, nay. It passes unanimously. Eighteen point zero nine, the superintendent recommends approval to change order number one for Albritton Williams, Inc. Appalachia Elementary School Heating, Ventilation, and Air Conditioning and Interior Finishes Project, RFQ 369-217, Mr. Albritton.
Thank you very much. This is at Appalachia Elementary School. This is HVAC interior finish project on building two, three, and four. And what we've done is we're trying to give them additional days only as not to disrupt school in the last two weeks moving kids out of a building to start. So this is a days only. It will move the substantial completion date to July nineteenth, two thousand seventeen. Plenty of time before school starts.
All right. Questions? Moved by Woods, seconded by Rasmussen. Questions? None. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposes, it passes unanimously. Public hearing, the superintendent, eighteen ten, recommends following a public hearing. Approval of the balance 2017-18 capital outlay budget as presented. Dr. Pridgen?
Yes, this is a final hearing, so we're following our timelines to get it in time for our finance department to start with their budgeting process. This is the, the final step in the, in the process.
May of approval.
Moved by Striplin.
Second.
Seconded by Lewis Butler.
There are no speakers.
No speakers. Okay.
Question?
Question, Wood?
I haven't reopened this attachment, so it is the same attachment we got originally, the capital outlay budget?
Yes.
I'm the new kid on the block when it comes to capital outlay budget.
Just a break, I can give you a ten thousand foot view of it too.
I would like that. I love the first page. It tells us where the funds are coming from.
Right.
And the question I had really for the superintendent is, as I noticed that, you know, basically we don't have a lot of money. We wish we did, but we don't. And you've had to decide where you're going to put these funds. I have no questions with that. But I noticed that Fairview is going to get a substantial amount of money for renovations, which the superintendent's talked about at length. And we'd just like to hear from him what sort of the plan going forward is with regards to Rickards and Woodville, since you've mentioned that a couple of times.
So I've visited all forty-five of our schools over the last month and a half. And, and some of our schools, like I said, we've done a lot of good things. We really, and you're to be commended on all the, all the good work you've done. But some of our schools are, need some TLC. And Rickards, Fairview, and Woodville are, are the top three on the list. So right now, we're in the process, we have some architect, architectural firms that are going around getting bids. We have, how many firms? Probably five or six firms going around to each site, meeting with site administrators. They're going to bring us back a proposal. Then one firm will be selected to draw plans for all three sites, to give us a way of work, a way of work moving forward. We don't have the money to pay for it all at one time, but, but my priorities are indeed those three Southside schools. We did set some money aside for Fairview immediately to address their, their gym is horrendous. I mean, it's, you'd have to see it to believe it. But to address some of their immediate needs. But the plan is for us to develop a design that we can lay out in phases. So as we generate revenue, we can put those dollars into those three sites to phase, to a phased project that addresses the needs at each individual school.
And will that, again, each year be about the same amount, twenty million and change? Is that what we're looking at?
That, that's, twenty million is all we have district-wide. I mean, yes. So we generate forty-six million. Of the forty-six, twenty-six is out the door, which leaves us twenty for maintenance and facilities and everything.
And that's why the ten thousand foot, we have, and I got both, my new maintenance director as well as Danny here, they take the lion's share of what's left. And one of the things Superintendent talked to me about when going over there was working together with these two departments because we want to protect the investment. And whether it's the construction side or the maintenance side, they're going to work hand in hand, and we're going to try to do as much as we can in-house. Butch Watkins here, our new maintenance director, he, he's been able to assemble some good people. And you're going to see that in the maintenance department going forward. And that's why with this limited resources we have, we have to be very sure that we're getting our good bang for the buck for that. Because as the superintendent said, it's really a pay, pay as you go way of work, and there'll be a master plan that will take several years. So you start with that twenty million, you divide it up. There's two big hitters, like I said, maintenance and construction. They get the lion's share of it. Then we also have to have technology in there because we can't function without technology. We know that. And so Bill Neman shop gets the other, the smaller part, but it does a substantial amount, you saw around four million. And then we have our safety and security that John Shop has a plan that's going to go ten years out. Is we need cameras, is a school needs maybe some fencing or something done immediately, we have to have that. There's a problem at a school and there's incidents that are taking place, they don't have a camera there. Well, they need to have the ability to go out there, assess it, and put a camera in there. So that's the other part that gets there.
And with the other, go ahead. Another piece of the legislation, like we talked about, up to, I guess, what, three quarters of a million dollars this year could potentially be shifted from our capital outlay allotment to charter schools to go to these, I guess. I'm still dumbfounded that they could go to renovate and remodel private, I mean, buildings that don't even belong to the public, so...
It's seven hundred and eighty-five, and I think, Councilor, you might jump on this too. If I have a place and I lease it to them, when I get that building back, any improvement you have is mine now. So if they lease that, that's, I'm sure Opal, that's probably would be it, Jeff. If it's one of those companies, if they are leasing that building?
Yeah, and there are, there are school boards around the state that are very concerned about this and not only the effect of that forfeiture, but also interfering with the constitutional powers of a local school board to, you know, assess capital outlay millage and spend the money. So we'll have to see how that bill turns out and what its, what its fate is. But there are, I know at least one school board that's taking a hard look at litigation over this.
Ms. Rasmussen, you have a question?
A different. Oh, just rever, and I apologize because it literally just occurred to me, and I just think, so I didn't mean to blindside anybody with this question. Nor do I know the answer and have an agenda at all. I'm just, just a question. But when we're looking at limited dollars and a lot of investment, are there other middle schools with seating capacity in the vicinity of Fairview that would make sense to redistribute? Or is, are all those schools maxed out?
No, I mean, we, we know we have empty, we have empty seats at Nims Middle School. The problem is that they're so spread out. You have the, the kids at Nims in the Bond Community, and you could, Fairview way over by the, by the fairgrounds. And Fairview's enrollment, they're at capacity. I mean, there's like nine hundred kids. It's not a...
Okay.
So to, to move those schools, I'm not sure exactly where you're going with the question.
No, I wasn't going there. I was asking the question there to get it on the record. If there's a legitimate need to invest this money in this facility, and there aren't, we've looked at other options that aren't viable, in your opinion?
Oh, yeah. My opinion, this is, yeah. I mean, I have no doubt in my mind this is the right thing to do at Fairview. I walked that campus. It's, and it's, it's easily doable. They have basically one big building that was just laid out years ago. I think it was more of a pod open to the space, so there's a lot of wasted space. So we can potentially go in that building, you know, with a, with a commitment with capital outlay dollars, but we can do some, some good things in there with, without a lot of, a lot of remodeling and renovations.
Okay, thank you. I had one other small question, I'm sorry.
Ms. Woods, then Lewis Butler?
Yeah, yeah, knowing about the Southside schools, Fairview was built with the right materials and quality materials. Sterling Bright, or former Assistant Superintendent, I know, told us at a meeting many years ago, Rickards is the only school that was built with inferior materials. And that's why the sidewalks and the stair, the stairways going up the stairs, students' shoes hidden and bopping, the sidewalks are not wide enough. There are many, many problems at Rickards because of the material that was built in, in a hurry during segregation time. So Rickards is the only school facility that is not built with quality materials. It's built with inferior materials. So that's what we have to look at.
So it may be a situation where at Fairview, you have, you have the building, the shell of the building, which is, which is physically sound, that we go in to the interior with interior walls that would just kind of throw up, thrown up for no rhyme or reason, that we can do a lot, but not have to replace the shell. Where at Rickards, it may be a situation where, what's the word again? Gestalti? Gestalti, where we just demolish the building and rebuild at that site.
That's right. That's, that's the way it looks like. Now, see, Fairview was a middle school, and all at once, they became a traditional school. That's why they put the walls up. At one time, it was like Bellevue, no walls. Those two schools were built just alike. But they continue to improve Fairview with quality materials, so it can be enhanced.
Okay. Further comments?
A small question.
Wood, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. In this budget, does it have allowances for schools to replace aging equipment? And I'm thinking things like vacuum cleaners and lawn mowers. Where, where do schools get that money?
That, that would be their internal, your accounts that you get, your flex dollars, and that's in the regular school budget.
But there's no money, basically.
That's not capital.
That's not a cap, you can't use capital outlay dollars on that.
Cannot.
That's operating money, I think.
Okay, well, we'll look at that at a different time then.
Yeah, it is. And remember, I addressed that, and I'm committed to send a quarter of a million dollars more back to our schools for things, things just like that. But those flex dollars could be anything from copy paper to toilet paper to lawnmower equipment. You know, those are the things that those principals need in order to run their individual sites.
And they haven't gotten an increase in fifteen years on that, so I'm really happy to hear you say that.
All right, so we're making some progress. We've moved from substandard materials to wherever it is.
Gestalti, a building.
That's it, gestalti. I, I, I got it, I got it. Further comments? Okay, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposes, it passes unanimously. All right, thank you. Eighteen eleven, the superintendent recommends approval for the certification of applicants seeking prequalification for bidding Leon County School Board construction projects.
Yes, another list. We add to the list each time. This is the yearly, where they have to do it once a year, and we update it, be updated tomorrow with our new qualified, prequalified that want to bid for our jobs.
Thanks for coming, Martha.
So will you tell them real quick, though, Dr. Pridgen, about the seeing the same old trucks and us?
Yeah.
I think the board members would like to hear this.
And, and this is going to have to do with some of the policies we talked about going forward. We're going to start working with purchasing. And with Merrill Shop, we've talked about how we talk together on these type things. We're going to look at some of the policies and the way we do it and make sure that, that we're getting business spread throughout the district and that everybody has a shot to work on it. And we talked about working together and how we evaluate. And so if you do work with us, we evaluate you. We're, we're going technology. We all have got surface pros, and we're all going to training bills, going to teach us how to do that. So we're going to document in time how you're doing. Ms. Lewis Butler, I heard you loud and clear saying we want to make sure that we're getting the right materials, and they're doing a good job when they do this. So that's what we're going to do. Maintenance is going to join in with construction, which is kind of a new technique. Because if you'll ask Butch, he hits, he gets tired of working on the back end of a school that's been, that's two years old. And so that had to be something done in the construction phase. Well, you know, Danny's was shorthanded that day, so that's what we're trying to do. Also, when you see the jobs going out, we're going to try to make sure everybody has a chance to do work in the district.
So how will this dovetail if it does into prequalification of these?
Prequalification's going to stay the same. That won't change.
That won't change?
Yes, ma'am. And we've talked with, it's, it's a process, and we want to keep you informed. It's going to take a little while to do it, but we want to bring you some scenarios and bring you the data to look at what we've been doing and make sure that it's, it's, you know, like we did this last policy. It took a while to do it. It's going to do the same thing with that. But we want to have a concept of where everybody that wants to work in the district has a chance to do that. And, and it's a lot, I think you see him shaking their head there. Yeah, it's going to be tough. But we want to bring you all of that. We're working with Opal and Jeff on this.
Okay.
As well as purchasing and business service, because they're all tying together a lot. Because a lot of the models we're going to do are going to follow purchasing guidelines, state purchasing guidelines. A lot, which means bidding.
Bidding, okay. Questions, comments?
Need a motion.
We do, need a motion.
May of approval.
Moved by Striplin.
Second.
Seconded by Lewis Butler. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Eighteen twelve, thank you, Randy. The superintendent recommends approval for all of the negotiated fee guaranteed maximum price contract for Ram Construction and Development LLC for Cobb Middle School Roof Replacement. Mr. Albritton?
All right, eighteen twelve is a GMP. We're using a CM on this project also. The extensive roofing number of buildings, the way they're designed, the way they're laid out. We brought a CM in. He's going to hit it hard this summer, do the interior, and then work on the exterior buildings as the school year progresses. What we've done is we did a selection process. Ram Construction was the number one by the selection. We've gone back by board approval and negotiated with them.
Okay.
And we're coming to you with a GMP of two point four nine seven million dollars.
May of approval.
Moved by Striplin.
Second.
Seconded by Lewis Butler. Questions? None. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Eighteen thirteen, which is a tentative agreement for the 2017-2018 collective bargaining contract between the Leon Educational Staff Professional Association, Florida Education Association, LESPA, and the Leon County School Board. Is anyone speaking to that? We do have a body. Ms. Deana McAllister?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair.
Good afternoon.
Please excuse my voice, but I'm excited to share the tentative agreement from both bargaining units, if you will, at this time. We met in executive session to share the superintendent's vision to work with our support staff. Those would be all the people that we tend to forget sometimes in our school system. That would be our bus drivers, our food service workers, our paraprofessionals. And at this point, the total salary and benefits proposed to offer the gift of time as well as a small financial increase for those bargaining units is one point four four million dollars. Our bargaining team met, and our tentative agreement with what you saw, which was posted for LESPA, is as follows. All unit employees working year-round, which are known to be two hundred and sixty-day calendar schedules, will have their schedule or calendar, work calendar reduced from two hundred and sixty days to two hundred and fifty-two days. This change will be implemented July one of 2017. And by changing the eight summer week schedule for employees working, usually a ten-hour day, will now be reduced to eight-hour days with Fridays remaining off. This is a bonus. It's called the gift of time. All of our workers work diligently throughout the summer, but many researchers have brought to our attention that an eight-hour day is more conducive and productive than a ten-hour day. So what we're doing is just modifying our calendar by eight days, which will then allow each employee to have an eight-hour workday. Their Friday's off in the summer, but wait for it. Their hourly rate will go up because their salary will remain the same. The gift of time. Sorry. Our school financial accountants, many of you who work with schools, all of you all do, know that we've had a huge turnover of bookkeepers. It's hard to compete with the market. So in accordance with that concept, the superintendent would like to increase school financial accountants, which are known to many of you as school bookkeepers, starting their pay grade level at twenty-eight rather than pay grade twenty-nine, and add an additional two dollars an hour to our high school bookkeepers. Last but not least, all LESPA employees not mentioned in the above, which are not working the two hundred and sixty days, will receive a three point one seven five increase on their hourly rate, which will be effective July one, 2017. Any questions?
Yes. I can't think of another way to ask this, so I'll just ask it and you help me straighten it out.
Sure.
So who will be left out of this? Is there?
Well, that's a good question. For LESPA, everyone is going to benefit, depending on your calendar, if you will.
Okay.
Okay, does that, so if you work two hundred and sixty days, which is year-round, okay. So the people really at the district office and our schools, our secretaries, excuse me, their calendar will be modified, which will increase their hourly rate, but their salary stays the same. Those who are working throughout the year on that calendar will be increased by three point one seven five percent.
Okay, and that gift of time is still in there?
The gift of time in terms of, well, they don't work, they don't work in the summer. The persons who work the fewer calendar days during the year, just the two hundred and sixty-day individuals.
All right.
Comment, Madam Chair?
Yes, Madam Striplin, then Wood.
I just want to take a minute to just commend the superintendent on this whole puzzle. I don't even know what to, it is just a big menagerie of trying to put together. If there were trees in our backyard that grew dollar bills, I know we would go out there and give everyone that works for Leon County Schools a significant raise because most of us have worked at a school at some point and know that they work well beyond what they're paid, and they're just, they're worth so much more than we could ever give them. So, you know, we've had, we've talked about things, we're not going to always agree on stuff, and we're going to agree on things. But this was something when the superintendent presented to us, he did the very best he could with what little money we have and tried to give everybody something. And I just want to, I just want to commend him and thank him for what he's doing for this whole entire group. and tried to give everybody something, and I just wanna, I just wanna commend him and thank him for what he's doing for this whole entire group.
Ms. Wood?
Actually, I wanted to say the same thing. Um, and, and what, who we're helping are our lowest paid employees.
Yeah, that's right.
In the district, and, um, it's very hard to make ends meet, and we know that some of our employees are actually working full days at schools, and then they're going to a second job. So I hope that this very innovative solution that superintendent came up with and, and they've agreed to is gonna help that situation, because we do wanna say thank you, and
We do, we do.
I completely agree, having worked those summer weeks, those ten hour days, I think eight hours is about all you're gonna get, so.
For real.
That's a, and, and it'll help people to be able to say their hourly rate is increased for loans and things like that. So I just, I just think, you know, you, you, you squeezed blood out of a turnip, did a good job.
Okay, Ms. Lewis Butler and then Ms. Restmussen.
Yeah, I want to, I thank the superintendent as well, and I was gonna ask you about furlough. Anybody on, are we using any furlough in this?
Furlough?
Furlough dollars?
Yeah.
No.
No.
Okay. All right, 'cause I got a call on that, somebody called me saying doing furlough, so I said, well, I'll wait and ask you.
Hope they want you tonight.
No furloughs involved, okay? So Fridays in the summer are off?
Yes, and they have been off in the past. The difference is you're working fewer hours Monday through Thursday.
Okay.
For the two hundred and sixty day employees.
Uh, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, Ms. Restmussen? Did you just say ditto?
I just said ditto to the comments.
Good, 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 good. And I'll say ditto to the comments as well, that's a surprise, isn't it? Good job, Mrs. Superintendent.
Yes. There's a few other items, I just wanna make sure that you're aware of, and I apologize for that. Um, if you'll keep looking through your attachments, if you will. The other items that, um, LESPA asked us to consider are, um, very simple words that they, uh, uh, vocabulary words, definitions of terminology that are used in the collective bargaining agreement. We tentatively agree to go ahead and honor that and include that in the CBA, which is the collective bargaining agreement. And in addition to that, look at our permanent status employees. So this is all tentative, and we wanted to bring it because it's important for us to do it now in order to begin the process July one. The superintendent's goal is for it to be effective July one.
Okay.
Need a motion.
We do, we need a motion. Moved Striplin, second by Wood. Further questions, no one, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Thank you. Voiceless almost, good job, Mr. Superintendent.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just wanted to point out, I'm pretty sure this is the first, your first time at bat as a collective bargaining expert, right?
It is.
And, uh, congratulations.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm sure the learning curve was steep, and you're still probably learning, but it seems like you've, um, done a great job, so thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Good. Well, great. Okay, are we ready for eighteen fourteen, which is the tentative agreement for twenty seventeen, eighteen?
Yes.
Collective bargaining contract between Loca ten ten, District seventy-eight, International Union of Painters, an ally trade, Loca ten ten and Leon County School Board.
We too have come to a tentative agreement, uh, with the ten ten. And if you look at the attachments, board members, and number one, food service workers will receive a three point one seven five percent increase on their hourly rate of pay effective July one, twenty seventeen. After this increased adjustment, food service workers will receive an additional one dollar per hour increase effective July one, twenty seventeen. Bus drivers will receive a three point one seven five increase on hourly rate of pay effective July one, twenty seventeen. After this increased adjustment, bus drivers will receive an additional one dollar per hour increase in pay effective July one, twenty seventeen. Transportation lead drivers' schedule will be reduced from two hundred and sixty to two hundred and fifty-two days and will receive a one dollar an hour pay increase. All unit employees working year round, the two hundred and sixty day calendar year again, will have their schedules reduced from two sixty to two fifty-two. This change will be implemented July one, twenty seventeen, by changing the eight summer work week schedule to employees working four eight hour days instead of the current four ten hour days, with Fridays still remaining a non-work day. All other ten ten employees not mentioned above will receive a one point, three point one seven five percent increase on their hourly rate of pay effective July one, twenty seventeen. And number six, we have a special affinity for, is we're gonna be, um, offering uniforms to transportation. The board will provide all bus drivers, bus aides, with five suitable shirts and one fleece jacket to be worn while on duty. Upon research and vendor selection, the board will also provide all bus drivers and bus aides with two pairs of either khaki pants or skirts to be worn while on duty.
Now, I really wanna know how this went, I mean, I just really do. I, I just need a little bit more, you, I, really.
It went really well, and, and the thinking behind number six
Yes.
is that people take pride in the way they look when they have a uniform. And what we wanna be to do is identify our bus drivers and our bus assistants, who are working with our young people every day. You should never be confused about who's in charge, and you should also feel good about where you work. And this will give us an opportunity to support that effort and to let our workers know that we take pride in who they are and what they're doing for our district.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. I tell you, um, Ms. Restmussen, go ahead and then I'll speak.
I'm sure, I'm, I'm sure I shouldn't say this, they get to choose whether they want a skirt or pants, right?
They do, and that was for religious reasons. We have some bus drivers, for faith-based reasons, would prefer to do the skirt, but yes, they do have the option.
Yep, I was going to ask that. And you know, this is gonna sound so funny, so Jeff, you might need to help me to put this in a right word.
I may just close my ears.
No, we're gonna let Joyce be up here tonight.
After the skirt and pants question.
I'm just saying, I can just hear now.
I know you were just worried about the Constitution, that's all.
I am.
That's all. Wow, I think I forgot where I was going. No, I remember what it is now. Uh, this is great, and I'll tell you why. We often get so many calls about everything that is happening, you know? And I think it's safe to say that we've not gotten a lot of them, and that's fine with me.
Right, great.
Because that means that there's some work happening out there, and I mean that in a very complimentary way.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, thank you so much. Thank you, Mrs. Superintendent, good, good, good. All right, Restmussen.
Does this, how close does this get us to being competitive? I know the bus driver situation puts, because we have city bus transportation.
They go there.
Bus drivers have a unique, I mean, are we getting closer to being?
We're getting closer, the city, uh, if I remember correctly, I'm looking over at Merrill, who's our money?
Pardon?
Yeah, thirteen dollars and fifty cents, and, uh, we had bus drivers starting as low as eleven forty-eight, but after our increase, they'll go to twelve eighty-four.
We're getting there.
So we're getting there, because it's important.
Yes, it is, because they siphon off.
Quick question. Um, I love the idea about the shirts, and I think, uh, I love, I love when teachers show up in their, you know, their logo, and who doesn't have a free shirt? I wore mine all the time. Um, but just a question, are we requiring them to wear this uniform?
While on duty, while on duty.
And have we had any feedback from them on how they feel about that?
They were in support of this.
Okay.
To be honest, and it, there was some back and forth about the number that we were providing them and how often they would be required to wash and wear them. But after we got beyond the minutia portion of it, they were very much in support of this, and they're very excited about this opportunity.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear that.
That's great.
It saved money, too.
Yeah, and in a year or so, we'll have to buy new uniforms, but that's okay, that's okay. Thank you, where are we now?
Need a motion.
Motion. Has it been moved, moved by Wood, second by Louis Butler? Questions have been asked of the others, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Good job, it passes unanimously.
Madam Chair, can I make a comment about this?
Yes, sir.
First, I'm very appreciative and proud, Dina did an amazing job. This was done in record time, I think we settled both within four hours of each other.
Oh.
Believe it or not, the one sticking point was the number of shirts and the number of khaki pants.
Was her voice the way it is? I'm sorry.
No, she, but, um, and I think Mr. Dietzen was disappointed, because he thought this would be, you know, drag on for days and days, and we got him out of there in four hours, which is good. So the attorney's fees will not, this bargaining cycle won't be as, uh,
Right.
But having, having said that, you know, we, the bus drivers and our food service workers will realize an increase of a, between ten and eleven, and eleven percent. But let's, let's be very clear, this was smoking mirrors. I mean, it really was, we pulled a rabbit out of the hat. So as far as our budget and our finances, this cannot be expected in the future. Given what we're being proposed by the legislature and what's before the governor, I don't want the perception to be, well, they must have plenty of money. We do not, and we are going to be hurting even more next year, and we have plenty of other folks, like our custodians and others, that deserve the same, the same equity and treatment, but will not have, we will not have the resources in our district if we only receive two dollars more per student an hour than we're receiving this year. And actually, we'll receive less money as a district. We won't, there, there are no more rabbits, this is the only rabbit that I could come up with. So unless we get to the governor and he vetoes that bill, I fear for our financial condition, uh, next year.
Okay. All right, thank you, Superintendent, we'll take that into consideration, of course. Eighteen point fifteen, Tallahassee Leon County Planning Commission.
That's been polled.
It was polled, thank you. It was polled. Information items, um, we see what's there, but I, where, where am I? I wanna go down now to the reports from the superintendent.
Superintendent's comments, item twenty-one.
Item twenty-one, Mrs. Superintendent. Comments about?
Two, two comments, one I had, were you gonna, you gonna mention something about the letters?
Yes.
Okay, and then I'll respond to that. Um, one, one comment I would, I would like to make, is, is you all are well aware of the situation that happened at, uh, at Charles High School recently with the Confederate flags and the students. Um, I think Principal Burgess did a, a wonderful job of handling that situation. We have been in communication with each other over the last several months when this issue, uh, first came to light. And, and there's a delicate balance between students' First Amendment rights to freedom of speech and then protect, protecting the educational environment at a public school. And unfortunately, from time to time, this issue raises its ugly head, and we, as a school system, are left to deal with it. But I commend Principal Burgess in, in the way he handled it. He tried to talk to the kids. Obviously, I think we have more, more educating to do. Uh, I, I think a lot of times, kids don't understand exactly, uh, what it is they're doing, how hurtful it is to certain groups. They, they, they just don't see it, and that's, and that responsibility falls on their, on their parents, on their family, but it also falls on our school system, that we have to do a better job of educating our kids as to exactly what, uh, what they're doing and how these people feel. And that's why now we are embarking, we have plans in place to, uh, develop a district-wide, um, diversity, uh, project for next school year, and we're gonna call it embracing the diversity we have in our schools, to start as educators, doing a better job to put the testing aside. And let's talk a little bit about who we are, where we are, where we came from. Uh, talking about that project they had at Hawks Rise with Immigration Day, and so we're doing some amazing things. But this was just, uh, unfortunately, from time to time, we have ugly marks, and this is an, this was an ugly mark. And there's no other way to sugarcoat it, but I'm, uh, proud of the way Principal Burgess handled it. He, he let those op, those children, those students, those young, those young students have an opportunity for freedom of expression and freedom of speech while on public property. But once it became disruptive to the, uh, school function and educational process, then they crossed the line. Once your rights impede on someone else's rights, then those rights no longer exist. And that's kind of, kind of the point we got to with, at Charles High School, but, you know, again, I think we have it resolved, and we just have to do a better job of educating and moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Comments, questions? Okay, second comment, topics, concurrency, is someone going to talk with us about that a little bit? Is that you, Mr. Wallen? What is concurrency, where did it come from? Why do we have to even be talking about it?
Well, um,
Please.
I'm gonna try and do this in two minutes.
Oh, okay.
Concurrenty is a land use planning, uh, concept, which basically means that before development occurs, the infrastructure has to be in place. There's, traffic concurrency means before you build, you have to have the roads. Stormwater concurrency means before you build, you have to have stormwater. Um, ten to fifteen years ago, the legislature said that local comprehensive plans had to have a school concurrency element. So when the law was passed, uh, the school district hired Kerry Roth, and, uh, Dr. Wills and John Kramer worked diligently with, with Kerry to do a number of things. Number one, they negotiated an interlocal agreement with the city and the county, uh, on school concurrency. Number two, uh, they developed a board policy that implemented school concurrency, and that was adopted by the board. And then, separate and apart from that, uh, the city and county, which owned the comprehensive plan, amended the comprehensive plan to implement a school concurrency element. And so, um, the basics of the school concurrency, uh, concept was, um, if there's capacity, we're gonna measure concurrency on a school basis. So if someone wants to develop in a school zone, we will look at whether there is school capacity in the zone, and if there is, the developer doesn't have to pay. If there isn't, there is a, um, a payment that you make, the developer would make, uh, presumably to be put away for, uh, the future to build schools. Um, it's not an impact fee, but the idea, it's, uh, it's a payment to, to allow us to create capacity. So the policy was adopted, and over a period of time, um, we haven't had situations where a developer had to pay. We've recently had more growth and development, primarily in the Northeast, and we're starting to see situations where developers might have to pay, uh, under our school concurrency, uh, program, which predictably has raised the question in the building community and other places, is this really what we want to do? Now, the reason that's a question that we can consider is that several years ago, the legislature changed their mind and said, no, even though we said several years ago, you have to have a school concurrency component in your comprehensive plan, now we're saying you don't. It's up to the local communities what they wanna do. So, um, there has been some discussion and workshops and other places about whether the school board wants to continue the school concurrency requirement, and this is one of those issues where there probably are more than two sides, there may be three, four, or five sides. Um, my, uh, purpose for, uh, visiting with you about this this afternoon is not to talk about whether or not you should keep the school concurrency or not, but to begin to talk about what the process would be if the board decides it does not want to continue with school concurrency. And unfortunately, because we are a party to an interlocal agreement with the city and county, the school board just can't unilaterally decide we're going to eliminate school concurrency. The basic process, um, which is outlined on this really beautiful flow chart, which was provided to you, I think, by email, would be for the school board to decide, yes, we want to move away from school concurrency or change the way we calculate school concurrency. Uh, meet with the city and county, renegotiate the interlocal agreement, ask the city and county to amend the comprehensive plan to either eliminate the school concurrency, uh, process or change it. And then, um, after that's all done, amend board policies, amend city ordinances, things like that. So, um, it's an, it's a simple thing to talk about, it's actually a fairly complicated process to do. Um, legally, it's complicated, there's lots of i's to dot and t's to cross, and documents to draft, and things to do. And then politically, it's also, uh, something that people can disagree on. There, our, our community, uh, likes its comprehensive plan. It's, it's maybe not something that you just go in and wave your wand and change. It would require cooperation from the city and county, and maybe they wanna do it, maybe they don't, I have no idea. But, um, the takeaway from this is it's not just bringing a policy change to the board and voting on it. It, it would be a fairly involved process that will probably take, everything goes perfectly a year, perhaps more. Um, so the, the, I, one idea, if you didn't want to eliminate school concurrency completely, would be to change where concurrency is measured. Right now, concurrency is measured, uh, at the school zone, uh, level. As an alternative, school concurrency could be measured district-wide. Now, what does that mean in practical terms? That means that if a builder wants to build in the Northeast, and you look at the school zone, there may not be capacity in that school zone, but if there is capacity somewhere else in the district, you would look at that and say, okay, because there's capacity somewhere, the developer doesn't have to pay. Okay, so, so that would be the way district-wide concurrency would work. A developer would only have to pay if we get to a point where there is no capacity district-wide. And I think the superintendent has shared with you, uh, recently, um, our schools, their enrollment, their capacity, and you can see- and you can see where there's unused capacity and where all the capacity has been accounted for. So I took more than two minutes, but that is kind of a 50,000-foot view of school concurrency. And the threshold question that is not teed up for decision today is, is it the desire of the superintendent and the board to make some change in the school concurrency area? If the board has no desire to make a change in the school concurrency area, then the discussion can end. If the board is interested in some change, my recommendation would be, rather than get into a long discussion about it tonight before graduation, that this item be set for a workshop, and we have a thorough discussion about the financial impact to the district, where the capacity is, where the capacity isn't. And then put the board in a position to make an informed decision about really what it wants to do. And then, if the board says we want to do A, then we'll go off and try to do A. If the board wants to do B, we'll go off and try to do B. But this is not an easy topic. It's a topic upon which reasonable people can disagree and do. The builder who wakes up one day and says, good grief, you know, I just want to build, and you're making me pay. I wasn't the person that filled the school with students. I just happen to be the one in line here, you know? He says, or she says, that's not fair. Other people say, well, one of the effects of this payment is to increase the cost of development in areas where there is no capacity, and hopefully, it moves the development somewhere else. Whether that works or not, I don't know. There's a thousand theories about all of this stuff. So kind of the takeaway of this is if the board wants to do something about it, it's a long process. If the board doesn't want to do anything about it, we can be done with it. If the board wants to talk about it, we ought to have a workshop.
Thank you, Mr. Wallen. My ladies of the board, this is a very complicated topic, as I suspect you will agree. And I am going to strongly recommend that we not tonight get into a discussion at all. We've heard a precursory kind of review from Mr. Wallen, and I think we need additional information. So if there is general consensus taken, we can table this for a discussion at another time and come back with workshop and other information. Would that be in keeping with where we are? Can we do this? And it's 4:35. I heard a yes, ma'am. I heard another one.
Yes.
I see another yes. Thank you, Mr. Wallen, Mrs. Superintendent. So if we need a date for that, then we will come up with a date at an appropriate soon, early time so that we can get into this and get our questions answered and our concerns. Is that the general consensus? I don't think we need a motion for that, do we, tonight, Mr.? Okay, so that's where we are. The sooner the better. We'll make that happen. Okay, where am I now, Mr. Wallen?
2301.
2301, slash what?
That is the FEFP veto issue.
Okay, the FEFP veto issue. Who's supposed to talk about that, the request? That's Ms. Wood, okay?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I brought this up, and, you know, I'm torn between the fact that we are on a timed schedule and we have graduation tonight and that this is a really important issue that I think we need to spend a little bit of time with. So I'll try to walk in the middle. I attached a letter that was from the Florida School Boards Association, not realizing that there were actually two letters. There's one that deals with... 7069, which I did not attach, but I did send in today so we can have that. Dr. Gail has that now. And the other one deals with the FEFP appropriation on line 91. And both, I guess, what I'd like to start out by saying, I've never seen in 40 years of education all the superintendents in the state, all the School Boards Association, the Teachers Association, everyone completely in sync on asking the governor for a veto. This is pretty remarkable, and I think it speaks to how important this is. And I'm not sure that the public really understands why we are so concerned. I liked the letter, actually, from the Superintendents Association. I liked them all. But as I said, I'd like you to read them thoroughly later, and I'd like us to post them so the public can read them. And I'm just hesitating whether I should read it or not.
Maybe excerpt from it.
Maybe just a little bit.
Just a little bit, please.
I'm just going to say, this is pretty strong. "On behalf of the Florida Association of District School Superintendents, we urge you to vote 7069 and the FEFP General Appropriations Act." This is from all the superintendents in the state. The School Boards Association did a similar thing. And they talk about, even though it seems like there's an increase to the base student allocation, in fact, once we factor in everything, as the superintendent mentioned earlier, we're looking at a $2 per student increase, which is not going to cover anything that we need. And it's really upsetting to me that the legislature talks and talks about quality public schools and bringing teachers in and retaining teachers and high-quality teachers. But, you know, money talks, and we didn't get any. And I think that the public needs to know that because you can't keep blaming what's going on, that the schools aren't of good quality, but then the legislature not be willing to pay for it. So I think that we have to speak up with one voice, the school board, the superintendent, the parents out there, and say that they want better. And that's what this movement is about. I know in Dade County, they're actually having public town halls to help the public understand what a dire situation we are in. So that part is the money piece, and Merrill may want to speak to a little bit about the local effect. And then there's also the House Bill 7069, which has things that are taking away. For example, we have a bill called Schools of Hope, and I'm not going to try to get into the whole explanation of that. But it basically says corporate charter schools can come into our district and, you know, do better than we can. And I think that we need, our school system needs a chance to be turnaround models. And I'll let Dr. Jillian Gregory say this a little better than I'm saying it right now, if you want to. But the bottom line here is that even though we can't take a vote tonight, because this is not on the agenda, I would love to hear, at least from our school board members, if they agree that this is a good idea to speak to the governor about this. And I'm hoping that the superintendent will take the ball and run with it, since he doesn't need it to be on the agenda, for all of us to voice our disappointment and our hopes to the governor that he will veto these two bills and that they will go back to the drawing board and really fund public education like it needs to be funded.
We thank you for bringing that up, Board Member Wood. I think I'm seeing head nods around that we are in support of the Florida School Boards Association and the Superintendents' Organization and want to follow up. We thank you for bringing it to us tonight, and we feel just a little anxious because it is 5 o'clock, but I think the superintendent...
It's not quite 5 yet. We have 20 minutes.
Well, all right, but I think we have an idea of where we want to go with this in support of that.
Yeah, and very, and this is obviously very concerning for all of us.
Yes.
And unfortunately, we're trying to close the school year down. We have 13 graduation ceremonies and all this going on in the Capitol. We're trying to run a large organization every day, and I don't want people to think like we don't care. We do. We absolutely do. And we will tag a letter alongside of what the Superintendents' Association already has done from Leon County Schools next week. Once we get all these graduations behind us, I will ask Ms. Gregory and Mr. Wimbley and Ms. Lowe back there, who pays a lot of attention to what's going on in the Capitol and legislature, just on her own. That's not her job, but she does it because she's so passionate about the impact it's going to have on our school system. And you're right, I've never seen a situation like this. It's just a lack of respect for public education. We can see where their priorities are, and they certainly are not with our public schools. Again, I fear for what it's going to do for us and the message it's going to send. There are some dollars earmarked for teachers. Thank goodness, Ms. Tripplin. But again, we're talking about best and brightest bonuses, $6,000 bonuses because of SAT and ACT scores. It's just, you know, I'm dumbfounded at times at some of the things that come through the legislature. $200 million set aside for Schools of Hope. Capital outlay dollars set aside for charter schools. As Ms. Owens mentioned, we have four active charter schools in Leon County. Other districts have dozens or hundreds of charter schools. And it's because, all in all, our public school system is very healthy in Leon County. And you all, as a school board, are to be committed for that. And everyone in this room is to be committed for that because people believe in our public schools, but they're not. If we keep taking dollars away from our public schools and funding them elsewhere, to other parks and to other charters, and they end up getting what they want at the end of the day, just vouchers to go wherever you want. That's where this is going, that they're going to slowly and systematically dismantle our public school system, which is the foundation, to me, the foundation of our country and our democracy. But yes, I agree with you, Ms. Wood. We will attach a letter from Leon County Schools as to the effect that it will have financially on us and otherwise before the end of next week. But I certainly don't want people to feel like everything's great, because I saw the headline, too, "Schools to Get More Money." Well, yeah, we got $2 more, but our healthcare costs are going up, retirement costs are going up. At the end of the day, Leon County Schools is going to receive about $40,000 less as a projection than we received last year. So it's not accurate at all. But you're right, the people will need to understand that.
And the other thing, you know, people don't understand, when a teacher gets a bonus, that doesn't go into their FRS, so that doesn't help their retirement. It doesn't go when they go to apply for a loan, because it's not part of their salary. So it seems like that's the school board's jobs all across the state, is to be funded and to help make those decisions about salaries, just like we did a few minutes ago, to help out our bus drivers and our food service workers. And that belongs at the school board level, not in the legislature, them deciding who gets what for what. That's our job. That's why we were elected.
Absolutely. They're taking away local control of how we allocate resources to better run Leon County schools. You couldn't have said it better.
Wonderful. Yes, Ms. Louis Butler?
Yeah, Superintendent Hannah, if we have to write a letter or two to the governor about testing? About the testing?
No, there's some, some testing issues are addressed in this legislation, which will provide some relief, not as much as we had hoped. I believe they left some of the two EOCs are going to be eliminated. Only one, but we were hoping that others, like US History, some more relief for testing. We'll continue to fight that battle, you know, another day. We are for accountability. We all, you know, want to measure how our kids are doing. But we're taking a baby step with some of this legislation, but it's, you know, it's not enough. We can do better. And then we're now also potentially going back to paper and pencil for three through six, where, yeah, it's mandated, where we bought all these computers now to prepare. Anyway, just whatever.
Wonderful discussion. Ms. Tripplin, of a motion that we rise so that we can get dinner and get to the graduation. Great.